My apologies. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Here.
Councilmember McEckren.
Here.
Councilmember Negretti's absence is noted. Mayor Protem Cox.
Yep.
And Mayor Garcia's absence is noted.
Sam, let me just go ahead and check this. Please.
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is, the agenda item is the free budget workshop. And I'll turn it over to staff.
To myself. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem and the members of the council. We would like to pick up where we left off two weeks ago with the free budget meeting. I think we only have two or three departments yet to speak to give sort of a high level overview. I have some concluding comments and some good news, but I'll save that for later. And with that, I think I'm turning it over to, oh, just as a matter of reference, a couple of other things going on which don't need to be discussed here. We're going to try to wrap up this meeting by about four o'clock or 4:15. So just trying to keep that in mind for staff as you present, not to get into too much detail unless asked. And at some point at the end of all that, we'd like to hear comments, questions from council about anything you heard today or two weeks ago.
Just, sorry. Just for the record, I got notes all over everything up to public works, some question marks, but nothing on enterprise. Where did we start last time? Enterprise, that's what I was thinking. Okay.
Yeah, right now we're turning it to Brian Dingler, city engineer, to finish the engineering budget comments, and that rolls right into our enterprises, economic development airport.
Okay. Brian?
Well, I know our time is limited, so I'll keep this brief. Just as an overview, engineering, the overall budget only has about 3% to 4% of the general fund, almost all the budget is out of restricted funds, both for personnel and the CIP program. The CIP program is increasing this year compared to last year in a few areas, including streets and sewer. And just to highlight a few of the projects, I'm sure you're already familiar with them. One of them is the other part of Bear Valley Road. Currently, the part that's under construction right now is from Paulson to Baroposa. The next project will be from Baroposa to Amargosa. We're also planning on re-constraining and rehabilitating La Mesa Road, all of La Mesa Road, next year, Amherst Road from Bear Valley to Mojave. We're doing another $1 million slurry sill project, and we're going to do about $2 million worth of replacements in sewer mains. And then the water, CIP, have already been, got over that, so you're familiar with that. And with that, I'm open for any questions you may have.
Brian, do we have a plan in place for silica industrial?
We do. That's in that five-year list of priority projects.
How far out is that?
It's not this coming year, it's the year after.
Okay. That drove it today, and it was almost as bad as Paulville Road, not quite.
It's getting pretty bad. Yeah, there's an especially large pothole that I noticed today as well on the industrial side.
But pothole filling should be something we do on a moment's notice, isn't it?
Yeah.
I mean, there's no reason to have potholes. Not, there are reasons to have them, there are no reason to tolerate them for long.
No, 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 I'm sure we'll get back on that one.
And is the, is the line replacement, the copper line, is the copper line replacement about $2 million a year, as far as the eye can see?
Yeah, I don't remember the exact amount, but it's going to be an ongoing program for the next 10 years, and we're, I know we're programming apparently a large amount of the water service replacements.
Because we were talking about that being somewhere around $25 million total?
And that would go beyond the 10-year period.
Yeah.
Yes.
On page 21, in the middle, EJ Division Summary. We had quite a bit of capital improvement scheduled this last year that we didn't get to. I know we're moving here, we're going, and we've got a lot scheduled for this coming year. Are the expectations that we will in fact, in 217, spend $15 million in capital? And where is that expenditure to be? Sewer, water, or?
It's really the whole, the whole, all of it together. And we're, yes, we are trying to advance those projects, and the streets, because we're spending more on LTF, on sidewalks, and any cap upgrades, that's a pretty significant portion of it also.
Okay. Any questions, Brian? I think we can move on to, so you had a public works municipal utilities, and all that's together in water, so we're now going to economic developments, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, next.
One area we didn't cover was the municipal utilities. We did hit water at the last meeting, and give the brief overview for the municipal utilities, which is, starting on page 29, and that's the funds dealing with both natural gas and electrical operations, both at Foxborough and on the SLI. Wouldn't characterize this budget substantially different than last year, but there are some meaningful deltas in some of the line items that you actually see in this budget. I would say collectively in the roll-up of the various funds that make VMS. VMS operates with revenues to the order of almost $14.9 million, with expenses of $14.6, so collectively about $300,000 surplus. I think to call out some specific eye-catching percentage changes, you'll certainly see one on the expense category under general, which actually corresponds to other charges in the subsequent chart below it. You'll see 122% and 126% respectively. One big item that we're seeing this, in this fiscal, for this upcoming fiscal year, is an added cost on debt service. There's a large principal payment being realized in this upcoming fiscal year going forward to retire the Foxborough bonds. That's something that had been, had not been required in previous years, but it is having to be recognized in the fiscal year, so that's about a $1.1 million additional supplement for our debt service obligation there. So that's one reason why those two numbers are so high. We wanted to jump down to production costs, reduce by 12%. One of the things that we did do earlier this year was we did lock in electrical prices for the next two fiscal years, because prices have come down, and we wanted to take advantage of the reduction in prices on the market, and actually were able to reduce our electrical commodity costs for the next fiscal year to the order of 15%. So that alone has contributed significantly to the overall production cost of your commodities, in gas and electrical. Another item, the 65% reduction on capital. That's largely because we did just take out the St. Mary's improvements, as we don't believe that they're going to meet their intended schedule. The project's been delayed, of course, so accordingly with that, the capital that would be required under our agreements is being delayed, so we actually pulled that out of the capital, capital budget. If there's anything noteworthy beyond that in the CIP, we do have money in there to study an upgrade, and we'll spend time in the next fiscal year to actually study in depth what it would cost to upgrade the substation out of SLSA, increasing from the 33 KV to the 115, with the intent of trying to keep up with the demand, but also improve the reliability of service out there. And then the only other capital improvement project would be the ongoing upgrade of the natural gas system out of SLSA.
In regard to St. Mary's, it's, what I know is mostly rumor. It's on, it's off, it's delayed, it's going. Give me help. Who's our contact person?
I've met with their CEO personally, and it is still going. They are reviewing the makeup of the hospital for modern needs. The hospital was originally designed as essentially what we think of as a hospital with always rooms on both sides, and there's less need for that and more need for sort of one-day or maybe overnight type of rooms. There's also some new equipment that was not around 10 years ago when the hospital was originally designed, and takes up some space, but they're making some shifts and making space for us. They're going through a design review now, and I believe in the near future they'll have sort of a final plan in place and get it moving forward. But we were very much assured that it is still moving forward, it's just under a planned review process. If you go back 10 years ago when it was approved or scoped, it was already, it was always intended to have this review just before the start of construction to see if there had been any significant changes to healthcare and the way healthcare is delivered.
Doug, when they get closer, can you ask if they are actually coming to a formal update?
Absolutely. Yeah, I know that they're getting close, and I know that they want to make a very sort of public announcement of this is what we're doing because there has been all these rumors.
Just so I understand this, Keith, I think I was clear on what you said, but this revenue and expense plan for VMS for next year includes the outlays for the bond, not just the interest, but the retirement of the principal?
Principal as well.
So we are now at a point where VMS is covering, carrying that bond?
Correct. The Foxborough bonds.
Yeah.
Yeah, the lawsuit and subsequent settlement for the amount that was awarded, the way those funds were split when they came in and was agreed to by the banks and us was that there was a five-year principal payment made at that time, so that we didn't have to make it for these five years. That was, it's now been five years, so this is the first year that that principal is due to us. It was paid, but it was paid from lawsuit proceedings.
It seems to me what's worth noting about that is, when I first came on the council, there'd been a lot of criticism, of course, of the prior decision to build that thing. It failed. We recovered the bulk of the cost through the court settlement, and now because the utility services buying and selling at a reasonable profit, it's able on its own, that activity, to retire that debt and to provide some capital for improvement. So on the whole, I think we have to look at that, VMS as a success, turned out okay. And it's allowed us to provide valued product, service to developments. Okay? I don't want to sugarcoat it, I want to make sure I'm seeing it accurately.
It was, it's been a painful 10 or 15 years, but
Hard getting here, but once we're here, it's doing well.
Feeling well.
It's doing well, yeah.
Under what tab do we talk about our on-principal and interest non-principal due? The reason I ask, I know that there was some auditing going back and forth, denial of raising money to pay, discussions with the state. We defaulted, I believe, on a couple of payments. Is that over? Are we out of the woods? Are we going to use tax increment to meet our obligations or not?
Yeah, it sounds like you're talking about the SLSA bonds. Yeah, SLSA bonds.
Interfund and debt service is available for our debt service.
We're going to get to that later here, for sure?
Well, the interfund debt service, yes, we're planning on talking about that, but I think the bond funds you're talking about were the SLSA bonds, that we didn't receive enough money, and the state prevented us from borrowing from the other bond funds. Ultimately, I don't want to say that we're out of the woods, but we can certainly see the clearing ahead of us. I don't want to oversimplify it, but do you have an update, a recent update, Keith, on exactly when we expect to have the first year that we can make a full payment?
I don't, right off the top of my head, but I believe Sophie Smith, who is going to present both economic development and airport, can likely speak to where we're at today with respect to debt service, and perhaps give outlook as to when, when it's rejected that we can at least full coverage of on debt service.
Okay. And just for your information, the discussion begins on page 46, under the tab, interfund loans and debt service. 46 is the discussion, and followed with the tables of debt service. For your background.
There we go, okay. Thank you. Okay. We'll have, we'll have more discussion here. Okay. Now, back to, back on schedule, Matt.
Keith, it's kind of to you at this point, I don't know who you have coming up next. That's all I have on VMS, unless there's any other questions. If not, then Sophie Smith will be the lead for economic development and airport.
Okay. Are there any questions for council? Any questions at all? Okay.
Good afternoon. Eric Ray, Airport Director, will also present, of course, on the CIP, airport, airport CIP budget. On page 23 of the budget book, economic development and airport are presented together, and as most of you know, it's because our functions are so closely linked. Eric oversees the airport, airfield, facility, and operations and security groups on a daily basis. And back there in City Hall, the economic development team oversees the budget, finances, marketing, business development, and real estate transactions for the airport. So we actually share staff, share funding, and share time, and we're hand-in-hand together, which is the reason they're presented together. As you will see, the airport budget for 1617 is estimated at about $29 million, $28,993. That is comprised of three different funds. One is the on-airport operations, and the off-airport operations, and the other is debt service. So as it relates to the on- and off-airport operations, ever since economic development became involved with the airport in about 2009, we've been operating the base itself and airport operation itself on a zero-based budget. We project conservatively revenues from leases and other services that we have out there, and budget our expenditures accordingly. From about 2009 to 2014, we did fairly well as far as building up a cash reserve in the operations. The challenge, and Mr. Mendiola mentioned this at the beginning of the budget workshop two weeks ago, the one challenge we've had and the one cost that we have been unable to control is related to the SEC litigation, and that has been paid for out of SLSA operations. So if we kind of take that, put it aside for a minute, which we'll talk about, and then Pat will also talk about in the interfund loan section, we just talked about running the airport, the inspirations of the airport. We pretty much operate on revenues and expenditures out there very balanced, same with off-airport operations. Small budget, but it's for the small facilities that we have off-airport.
We, I'm sorry for the, you mentioned the on-airport, off-airport. Does the revenues raised on-airport remain for expenditures on-airport?
Yes, and they have to, by FAA covenant.
I know that, but there's rumors in the community that City of Victorville is taking money from the airport, putting it in our general funds, and says this was a joint powers of outlawing this, very good, they're not sharing it, all of that wealth we're getting. So when we talk about on-airport, off-airport expenditures and income, please just kind of explain it and the reasons behind it.
Right. So one of the big tasks when economic development got together with airport in 2009 is, the main marching orders were that the airport was not to rely on any general funding. It needs to be 100% self-sufficient. There are separate funds created, separate tracking of operational revenue, whether it's from fuel sales, from leases that are out there at the airport, parking fees, those types, landing fees, those type of operational expenditures. Those are not, those are not tracked with the general fund expenditures or revenues. So that, the SLSA, Airport Authority budget is completely separate.
Where are those revenues, Sophie? Where are those?
Where are they located?
In the, in the budget. I see the expenses on
Page 28.
Page 28?
28.
28.
So on page 28, you'll see, and there's referenced above, I talked about the on-airport, off-airport, and then debt service fund.
Okay.
You'll see the three fund numbers referenced on top, 450, 452, and 455. Those are the three categories that we divide expenditures and revenues into for SLSA. And so that includes anticipated tax increments that flows through from VITA, and then the corresponding debt service payment, but it also includes the operational revenues that we talked about, lease revenues, and then the operational expenditures, and they're all combined under the Airport Authority's one fund.
Where are the lease revenues? In charges for services?
They're categorized under
Charge for services?
Yes, yeah, they're under, they're in a couple, as you can see on that page, Jim, the revenues are divided up more so into the general accounting category.
Sophie, we also have in the airport under any price front, and that one, you see the revenue that categorize a little bit more broadly, but not as well.
What, and is that Sophie? 28.
Yeah, I'm seeing the budget of revenues, $31 million, expenses at 28, 29, and I'm just curious, where are the lease revenues? They're in those revenues somewhere.
Yeah, it's in, what, the investment income? The other revenue is primarily going to be a lot of the tax increment revenue coming in from VITA. The $6 million is going to be categorized as investment income, and then the charges for services are going to be where our landing fees, fuel fees, those types of things are all.
And leases, lease income is where? Which one of these?
In that line item that is called investment income.
Oh. Okay.
That's the general category that the city uses. When you get into a detailed municipal budget, for example, you'll see it under lease revenue.
Okay.
So the airport operation is balanced in terms of the on-airport revenues and expenditures, as I mentioned before. The big unknown and the challenge that we've had in budgeting over the last two years is the SEC legal fees. We've budgeted for them and been very off. And so we are presenting to you what the actual operation of running the airport is.
Which looks like it's positive.
It's real close to balance, right? We have one CIP item in there, one big project coming up for the year that I'll let Eric speak to briefly, and then I can answer quickly the question that you had on debt service. Let me see if you have any questions.
We're finishing up three projects this year, so they're not shown on the year we're discussing here. So with those three closing up, the only projects we have left are two FAA grants, one, the big one Sophie mentioned, with Runway 1735, on the order of about $5.5 million. That requires a $585,000 match, which is shown in our, it's part of our operating costs under infrastructure. We also are finishing up a wildlife hazard assessment. It's an FAA mandated requirement to study the wildlife, and that's only, only anticipating about $8,000 expenditure next year because we started it about nine months ago. So it's a one-year-long, 14-month stack, 12 years field survey, and two months of report composition. So we anticipate we have those two projects for next year.
Are the FAA revenues, grant revenues included in revenues?
The
Or do they get netted against the expense?
We're showing it both ways. We're showing it, some of it's on capital on page 50, shows $25,000 solve as a capital project, the menu for the wildlife hazard, but the other portion, the larger grant, is shown in the infrastructure, which is
And the incoming from FAA would not be reflected on page 29. That is categorized on a 275 fund, under any price rate, in another part of the budget. So only the match portion that comes out of the airport is reflected in the airport budget, which is about, just a little under $500,000. The larger $6 million
So the grant revenue and the related expenses don't end up in the airport operation, only the match?
No, it's two different funds.
Is the other charges, other revenues and other charges, is that what Jim was asking about? Is that the tax increment revenue and the debt expense?
No, that's only revenues, and the other revenue, the larger $23 million, that is the revenue that we anticipate coming from VITA to pay debt service.
Yeah, tax increment.
Is on the other revenue section. Debt service for SLSA is top 21, you ever take $21 million a year? And for the first time in a long time, we are anticipating, based on our consultants' professional projections, that we will actually generate 100%, just slightly over, to pay debt service. But the caveat there is, because of the dissolution process and the fact that we only get money twice a year through that process, January 1 and June 1, the smaller revenues generated are, the way that the process is designed, are used to pay the larger debt service payments in June, I'm sorry, in December, which is why we often default in December. Even though we are generating 100% on a calendar or fiscal basis, we still may have, and we still anticipate, having shortfalls in December and then a catch-up in, in the spring or June.
Do they have formal loan documents for that, with the interest charge and expenses?
Well, those would happen within the same fiscal year, December to April, so we won't have to do an interfund, unless they go past the fiscal year, correct?
We don't borrow any money to make those debt payments, do we?
We really can't.
Yeah, we pay what we have.
Yeah, we pay what we have, and then try to catch up in June. But the covenants on the senior-level bonds are very strict, so it's complicated. The waterfall that occurs is very complicated. We have legal counsel review it, essentially help us make those determinations.
Before the definition, Jim, we used to make the, we would make up those shortfalls with RDA money, and we were allowed to do that, and it would be within the same fiscal year. We just don't have the ability to do that any longer, which is why we've been defaulting consistently the last several Decembers, last three or four years.
But the default doesn't carry over beyond the fiscal year?
We usually have enough to cure at least the December payment. We have
I'm sorry.
I think we have $14 million from previous years, like starting in 2012, that little by little we start to, as we, as the increment goes up, we start to chip away at those older defaulted amounts.
Kind of like being 10 feet underwater, going to nine, going to eight, but we're still under, under water.
And who keeps track of the default of the amounts that are in arrears? The trustee or us?
The trustee and Kristina.
Okay.
On parcels B and D, I noticed that we're looking at a reduction in revenue of 45%. We speak to that, and then also on charges for services, although it's going up 25%, significantly down from 2014. I assume that has to do with the airport, airport joint use agreement with federal government, but I'm not sure. Charges for services, and in 2014 it was 2.2, and it went down to a little over a million the last two years. It's going up this next year, which I'm kind of curious as to what, what's driving that number, understanding that we're having less trip rotations and things like that. But I'm just curious if that, if the reduction of nearly a million dollars is attributed to the UWA.
And the first two columns are actuals, and so we may have budgeted slightly, we try to budget conservatively when it comes to revenues. So we, for charges for services, which would include things like fuel, we may have very well budgeted, so we're closer to lower budgeting this year, and due to things like Boeing's flight testing programs and things of that nature, our actuals came out higher than budgeted. So that's part of the reason, is that those first two columns are actuals, and we tend to come out higher on revenues, actuals, than we do on budgeted revenues.
But I would, I would venture to believe that a large part of that decreased from 2014 to 2017. The 2.2 actual, if you will, to 1.2, a large part of that is partly attributed to the UWA transaction.
Correct. A lot of, that would be captured there as well.
Getting close to working that out. Never mind.
Well, let's put it this way, our new budget reflects the current amount we expect
to get with the the 1.2.
Okay, all right. And then the B and D, just that being down 45% is, is that due to the restructuring?
Yeah, that's the, that's the, we had a high year in 2016 because we had the Kinder Morgan settlement.
Oh, okay.
And now we don't have that yet.
Okay, thank you.
Sophie, just, this is part comment, part question, it's on the bond indebtedness and it's this whole business of being in default. My basic understanding of bonds, I'm not an expert in this area, but my basic understanding is that the bondholder buys the bond, expects an interest payment every year, and at the end of the bond term, in thirty years or twenty-five or whatever it is, wants his money back. But he gets no principal payments until the end of the, until the bond is terminated or called. The custodian collects from us enough to pay the interest and enough to put aside principal, so that when you accumulate the principal over thirty years, enough will be there to pay off the bond. It's my understanding that our default is we're paying enough to cover the interest, so the bondholders are getting their interest payment. We're coming up short on the principal commitment that we have to pay to the custodian, but that doesn't translate into a default for the bondholder because they're not expecting any of that money. We're just slow getting the money paid to the custodian for him to accumulate it so that when the bond term ends, he'll have enough money. Right, wrong, I'm in the ballpark?
Mostly accurate. I would say over the last two years, the most junior bonds have felt a little bit of a pinch.
Didn't even get their interest payments?
Didn't get the interest payment because they are super subordinate. I may have just made that term up, but essentially they are below the subordinate bonds.
And the custodian decides who gets paid and who doesn't?
No, the custodian just does the paying. At this point, we're supposed to decide based on all the bond covenants, and we leave it 100% to legal counsel.
Oh.
Bond counsel, because it is far too complicated. What feels like we should be able to simply make up everyone's payment that was due in December, come June, is not that simple. We have to set aside monies for the more senior bonds in June, even though the junior bonds were left out in the cold in December.
So some bondholders are suffering.
Yes.
Yeah, they're a relatively small percentage of the bonds, and only the most junior bonds, but some of them have suffered a little bit.
Are they also the highest risk and highest earnings bond?
By far, they're the highest risk.
Definitely the highest risk, yeah.
Highest risk for the bondholder?
Yes.
I don't recall the most recent, but when we first set out to try to do some projections, it was going to take about five years until we got to a break-even point, which we sort of are now, and then probably about another five years until we caught back up and had everything repaid. Sophia, are we still tracking about that point?
Yeah, about 2021, we're projecting that we will have, be able to pay both current debt services, while the accumulated $14 million in the past due, based on conservative projections.
Interestingly, just last weekend, I had a chance, I spent part of the time with a financial advisor for a client we share, we were at their annual meeting. They have about $9 million invested, they have completely abandoned the municipal bond market. They feel like the risk is so great, they just don't even want to consider, especially California bonds, largely because of redevelopment.
Wise decision.
Just, they're getting out of municipal bonds.
Had California not eliminated redevelopment in the way that they did, we could have loaned money from one RDA to the other, as we used to do, sometimes we'd get tight for one.
Yeah.
And nobody would have felt a pinch at all.
Do we have a table someplace in the budget or otherwise showing all the bonds that have been issued, when the due dates are, principal interest is due annually in December and in June, and payoff dates?
Usually it's a financial statement.
Yeah. If it's there, just, yes, we'll do it, we'll look at it later, but I just...
It's in the financials, but it's really difficult reading, and it's not a nice table.
It'd be better for us to just simply prepare a one sheet.
That would be great.
Yeah, if you could do that, that would be great.
Yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't have all the detail.
Forty-seven and forty-nine are just the current years, kind of one interest due.
And we say that, even though it's really important and interesting information, there's nothing we can do about it. It is absolutely outside our control. It's all driven by tax increment revenues and bond terms and custodians and lawyers.
Somewhere in nineteen, 2036 to 40, there's millions just due automatically, we're paying nothing on that.
Yeah, those are the risky bonds.
See, that added also, doesn't show up.
That we're not putting anything into.
That's the way the bonds are set up.
Wow.
Effectively, the bonds are set up to where the very last bonds that were issued in 2008, the last four years occur after all the other bonds are paid off. And so that $21 million roughly goes 100% towards those bonds, they simply sit and accrue interest for thirty years. I've heard it termed the worst bond issuance in the history of mankind. But, see, I'm pretty sure I said it, actually. But if you look at the overall payment of $21 million, it simply doesn't change. It's just some of it goes to these bonds, and then eventually it goes to those other bonds.
But it's still one target.
That's the argument in favor of them, and they still think it's a terrible bond issuance.
You know, I know the council's not in generally looking at issuing bonds at any point in the near future, but I am, I would be curious to know, and perhaps staff can look into this, you know, the college just refinanced some of their bonds and saved $4 million in interest payments, and why shouldn't we look at the possibility of doing that if it's possible? If we can save the city and taxpayers' money by refinancing bonds, I don't know why we wouldn't consider it.
The missing part of that equation is that both they, and there's a local school district who did something similar, was they essentially were accepting the fact that they, although they were, had the authority from the voters to bond for a much larger amount of money, so their interest was based on that much larger amount of money, they're sort of giving up half of the money because they're never going to get there. They're never going to get the property tax growth to get there, so therefore they could refinance and sort of give up bonding capacity that they were otherwise paying for, but were never going to get.
The other thing is, those are general obligation bonds. I have a feeling we could never get tax increment bonds if we went out in the market, couldn't we? Who would ever sell them?
There's no provision of law to do it right now.
So we would then be creating a debt for the city out of a debt that is not the city's right now. Am I sort of right when I say that?
I don't think there's...
I don't even know that you could get there.
Yeah, I think there are some provisions to refinance in the dissolution law, but I think our issue that we've been thinking of more recently is probably our credit rating on them.
That's correct, because of the going concern.
Yeah, that it might be very difficult to refinance.
And I realize it may not go, that may not go away until the SEC goes away.
Yeah, yeah.
But assuming that that does happen at some point in the future, I think it would prove us to look at it if it's a possibility, if it saves us a lot of money.
Sure.
Yeah, why not, that's all.
Any other questions on airport? This is very quickly, the only other...
The on-airport operations or on-airport income is used for the actual expenses on the airport. Several years ago, we had a gas facility, and we needed to complete the gas lines again, so we didn't use the trucks. Has that been completed?
Yeah, that was a project.
That has been completed this year with the remote rack. A few final touch-ups that need to be done to make it fully operational, but it does have fuel in and out, it can't...
Very good.
I believe you'll notice the completion.
It has been, yes, sir, the completion has been followed.
Yeah.
Now, as far as the off-airport operations, is there any restrictions on that money also in regard to where can the money go? Who gets it?
We can spend it on airport, it can actually go back to the airport.
Can't go to the general fund.
It does not go to the general fund.
We need to clarify that, there's a lot of rumors running around how rich we're getting off the airport.
Who's spreading these rumors? Who are you hearing about?
I don't know if you can clarify it enough to kill all the rumors.
If we had all this money, we could clarify it for hours, and it still wouldn't affect the people that choose to believe that we're getting rich off the airport.
Facebook is Facebook, and everything else is right, isn't it? Truth.
The mayor and I had a very intense meeting with someone over that issue, so we can out here every chance we get, we need to explain it. We didn't have a test meeting between us, we had a meeting with someone else, that was just full of accusations in regard to what we're doing at the airport, so. Okay, that's all I have on that.
What's next, Peter?
The only other budgets on page 23, under economic development, are the still with the wind down of the RDA, which we're still dealing with. You see a $4 million dollar budget under economic development, that consists of...
You said page 23?
Yeah, still page 23, on top of the airport line item. That's the housing successor agency expenditures to continue the housing activities that the city elected to take on upon the dissolution, as well as the continued obligations where the revenue flows in from the rocks process. So all of that is represented on page 23, under economic development, so that's what intake, that's what is held in the harbor.
Why do those other charges explode like that in 2015, and then come back down?
Let's see.
Other charges?
Two million, four to fifteen million, nine ninety-six, and then back to three million and thirty-two, three million, two hundred.
I believe that's the way that the tax increment that was coming in to, before the dissolution, tax increment from VITA flowed through the RDA.
And the revenue relates to that?
It transferred out to the airport, and then debt service was paid. So I believe that's why there's such a large number there. And then through the dissolution process, we really started separating the finances, and so you see just the three million and the three million in the next two years deal with the debt service, that's for the Victorville RDA, because it still has debt. So it was kind of a combination there, and then we changed our accounting method to really separate them.
But we aren't going to see that, in the same way?
No, we have about three to four million dollars flowing in for the successor agency, and we pay off debt service and a few obligations, and it's about three or four million a year, it's nowhere in that $15 million range. Okay, any questions? Thank you.
Is that everything? Fred, one final update on the general fund, based on comments, not quite direction, but based on comments from the last meeting, and simply continued work. I met with fire chief Dan Muncie, as well as his boss at one point, and we've come up with a way that the additional squad that the fire department has requested, we're going to split the cost with the county. They currently fund three firefight paramedic positions that are housed at the airport to sort of boost that operation and allow a truck to occasionally go off-airport. So that, that works, but it doesn't work as well as, or it's not as important as the squad is. So the budget, when it comes back to you in a month or so, will include the additional squad with a split. City will pick up the three, three new positions, which will be new, brand-new positions, and the county will shift those three positions they've been aiming for over to this squad. Except we have the squad at only half the cost, they'll provide the vehicle. And that essentially gets us halfway through the roughly $1 million or so that we were still trying to close that gap. The revenue idea that the fire department had is something we're going to bring forward with the budget. It's an advanced life support, charge back to insurance companies in the event they provide advanced life support on the scene. We're still trying to work out the final revenue number as far as how much we're going to budget, but it's a couple hundred thousand dollars, it appears. That gets us within shouting distance of closing the gap. So I'm 100% confident that in a month, when we bring the formal budget back for adoption, that we'll have a balanced general fund budget without any further problems. Kind of where we are on the whole budget. With that, if there's any additional budget questions or budget comments or any requests from the council, we'd love to hear them before we move on to the interfund loans update and as well any other borrowing that has occurred, we'd like to get into that.
Just one thing, Doug, I had asked Doug Matthews, and I think he's able to do it, I just didn't probably have time. Embedded in that water district activity is the wastewater treatment plant. I'd really like to know what are revenues and expenses? We don't need them by detail, but I'd like to see revenues for that plant and expenses.
So there's two things, two takeaways. One is sort of a P and L, if you will, for the wastewater treatment plant, and we'll get that to you. But then also, as Mr. Cox requested, just kind of a one sheet, it may end up being two, but one sheet on all of our, in, all of our debt with not just the financials that appear in this document, but also just the details on the term, the termination date, interest rate, you know, just sort of a fine detail, so that everyone has it on one sheet. I actually was able to identify it on page 30 in the water district budget.
Oh.
So I can share that with you now. In that water district budget, you'll notice, note at the top that it's funds for 10 through 630. The Fund 412 is the actual fund that's created for the wastewater treatment facility. And actually, the numbers that you're asking about are really baked into the charges for service on the revenue side, so that $32.1 million number, the revenue component that is industrial wastewater treatment is 5.2 million, of which about $750,000 would be connection fees. And then on the expense side, I think it is actually impact down there wastewater treatment, you've got the 3.38 number on the expense side.
How in the world could the actual be for 2015 be $600,000? When our budget for '16 was $3 million and our budget for '17 is $3 million, must be something not captured.
Yeah, that likely had to do with the fact that this is going to be the first year where accounting up to this fund, or previously it was under Fund 250, I believe it is, the sanctuary fund.
So the revenues are about, revenues, Keith, are what, four and a half?
Five point two.
Five point two?
Four and a half is actual revenue, yeah.
So it is three million in expense? It is three billion in expense?
Three point three, point three, so operationally about 1.2 to deposit, based on that.
And that includes our revenues from the power plant?
That would be on reclaimed water.
Reclaimed water?
Probably separate. Yeah, separate from this year.
Dr. Snapple, yes.
Reclaimed water is Fund 412.
But that revenue from the power plant is an important part of the wastewater treatment operation.
Say that again? It's just accounted separately, so it's in traction.
Yeah, I don't want to mess with the accounting stuff, it's just information. It'd be nice to see the whole picture.
Yeah, because it goes to the overall operation of the plant now, and, you know, what it's doing.
There's a very important reason for building that plant, is to supply water to the fire department, and now we're actually doing it. Well, that would be nice to see.
Other questions? What's the next category?
Next is interfund loans.
Before we get there, I've got a couple of questions.
Okay.
Back on page 40.
Page 40, sir?
Page 40. Speed up your thought. The actual expenditures in 2014 for personnel was $19,000. 2015 was $245,000. Budgeted for this year is $340,000. But I can't recall of a single item coming to the council for authorization of additional personnel that's owned and operated by the electrical system, what reason, what's going on?
The, you may recall, we formed a streetlight assessment district, and so it partially funds the traffic section for traffic signals, so there are some salaries that it pays for in some of the operations. Mesroide does too, but so that's, that was the change that occurred.
So, the only change then is to pay for the lighting and the design of streetlights where there's a streetlight on top of each signal?
Well, the, the change you see under personnel is after we established the streetlight assessment district, it pays for part of the signal maintenance crew.
Which came out of engineering before.
Part of their salary was paid entirely out of measure I. Now, it's partially funded out of streetlight.
So, that, present measure I funds?
It does free up more measure I funds, yes.
Okay. Other streetlights, there's seventy-five thousand capital. Is that for the signals also?
No, that's not for signals. That's for adding streetlights to the system because there's a small capital component that was built into the assessment district.
So, do you have a list of where you're adding those streetlights?
Yes, we do.
Now, if we have neighborhoods that lights are out, do they call Edison? Do they call you? Do they call anybody but me?
As my experience, usually what happens is they'll call, they'll call the city and then we call Edison on their behalf and then it gets on their maintenance list. But it can take quite a bit of time before they get replaced.
So far, two years. Who called? I did.
Yeah. I, I remember that one, Jim. We checked on it just a few months ago and we are still waiting.
I know.
I don't know what to tell you on that.
Should we call him again?
Have you talked to Jennifer Pusson?
We have a new Edison rep, right?
Yeah, I can, I can reach out to her. She's not been involved in street lighting complaints, but I just hope you reach out to her.
Angela, start it.
I just know when I have one out on my street, I talked to Nancy back when that was done.
There's only a nine out of about like.
Nine?
Okay, I was just curious.
Yeah, we do, some of that salary does go towards a city employee to win possible check neighborhoods for streetlights that are out. That's right.
Okay.
But if you've got a list, we'd, we'd be happy to follow up on.
Okay. Well, when I should say this publicly, when I talked to the Edison rep, they said, well, can you give us the number on the pole?
Oh.
And I said, no, I'm not going to do that. I'd rather take pictures of all of them and take a half-page ad to Daily Press to show unity class. I'd rather do it that way. Not going to go out at night, take pictures of them and the numbers on the pole. It's dumb, but there's nine lights that are still out and it's the same lights.
You and Spencer has an upcoming program, a business builder opportunity about customer service excellence, so maybe.
You gotta try calling Frontier about it. There's no problem.
All right. That's, that's all I have on that. Thank you. Yes, are there any other questions before we move to the inter-fund loans? Any questions from council members, any comments?
Let me preface just briefly, Pat, I don't want to steal any of your thunder, but.
Please.
Jim, you will recall when you were a city manager back in two thousand nine, ten, we put in place all of these loans, I shouldn't say all, but a majority of these loans is this inter-fund borrowing. And the city was criticized heavily for it. And the reality at that time and the reality still today is the borrowing that is now documented had existed prior to, some of this borrowing existed from ten years prior, but it's simply never been documented. So, you and I were criticized pretty heavily for simply documenting it as if we were borrowing the money. This was all when it was established, old money that had been borrowed informally that we were simply formalizing. So, Pat, what?
I have, I have some questions. I'm not going to ask them now, but till later when I ask questions, if somebody says, well, why didn't you ask them in the meeting? It's because they don't need to be asked in public. Forty-one. Here it needs a lot of explanation.
Page forty-one. Forty-four.
Forty-four, yeah.
Sorry, say two thousand, forty-one. We're going to discuss it publicly, I'm trying to.
Safety.
How do we go from five hundred and four to maybe four thousand to fifty?
I believe that to be red light cameras, but there you go.
Okay.
Where are you, Jim?
So, we laid off all the traffic people and we got rid of red light cameras. Page forty-one?
No.
I thought we were on forty-four.
Jim had a question about traffic people.
I just had a question.
No, there was nobody laid off as a result of it. Money that came in went to pay for the cameras.
Paid for what?
The red light cameras.
Red light cameras.
This is all the.
The revenue that was generated from the tickets that were written as a result of those red light cameras essentially one hundred percent went to other sources, whether that was the court or to Redflex. And this was the fund that that money flowed through. Money would come into the fund and then get paid towards the cost of those cameras. Some of that did come back from Redflex to pay for two personnel in the sheriff's department who would review the videos footage of the citations before they would be issued. And those two positions have been eliminated.
And, okay. Were those in other charges?
Yeah.
So, that's what's been eliminated?
Right.
And operation maintenance is just the transferring of the fees?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's go.
Okay, so we're now on Edison fund loan and debt.
Would it be safe to assume that all of that DIF public building borrowing was for the clubhouse building?
No, for city hall.
Majority of it's for city hall.
Oh, for city hall.
So, essentially, the total, total for the inter-fund loan out of December two thousand and fifteen for forty-eight point six million. We have two loans that is due to be renewed, three, I'm sorry. The golf course loan from solid waste will be replaced by sanitary fund. And the loan to public building DIF and fire service DIF from the various DIF will be unchanged and it will be renewed for another five years. Then as Sophie presented, we have a new loan that will publicly be presented in this upcoming year for the everyone.
For SEC costs essentially.
For what?
For SEC costs.
Oh.
The only question I have on this, because obviously it's good to have them documented and I'm glad that Jim, you and Doug did this back when you did, but you did a lot of five-year terms and we're going to be asking, are there any five-year terms? And so, I'm more curious about when do we expect to have these paid off versus, I mean, why would we renew it for five, another five-year term if it's going to take us twenty years to, to pay it off?
Because the law allows a five-year loan.
Oh, that's, that's it, okay.
Overall, the DIF is a hundred percent dependent on development. If we get a big spike in development, debt nineteen million or so, is that right?
Correct.
For DIF, that could be paid off in literally three or four years if we had a, a big boom in development. But we purposely, when Jim and I set these up, we loaned from DIF to DIF for that reason. We loaned from the water utility to the electric utility because it seemed to make sense. We loaned from the Fair Valley RDA to the SCA RDA or Old Town RDA. We tried to keep the loans between like funds. So, most of this is DIF. The golf course loan ultimately will have to be repaid from the city's general fund. As we learned last time, city's general fund doesn't have the means to repay it. These loans that we shifted, they had been from the refuse fund or solid.
Solid waste.
Solid waste. I call it refuse because it's easier than explaining every time that solid waste is trash and anyway. So, we're shifting it over to the sewer fund because there are needs in the solid waste, the trash fund for capital and for operations as well. So, they need to be more liquid than they have in the pounds. Whereas the sewer fund is, has monies available.
The, some of the debt such as for the libraries, I know that part of the any degree development is a disposition of assets, disposition of property. We have a huge amount of property. I don't know if land, raw land values are back, housing is. Are we making an attempt to market a lot of this land that we've acquired in the past?
As prescribed by the rocks process, yes. And there's, yeah, we, we have approved LRPMP, which is some acronym. Long Range Property Management Plan. Definitely, no. We do have, we have a disposition program in place and it identifies different methods to dispose of property. We actively, currently, we actively have property on the market today, properties that were in old RDA's.
Now, when we sell the property, that goes to pay the bonds?
No. No, the proceeds of the sale of real estate, all of the properties that are subjected to disposition were part of Fair Valley or Victorville RDA owned. So, effectively, any proceeds would go back into the rocks to pay any continued enforceable obligations. If those are paid off, then effectively the money gets swept and then distributed to tax entities.
Including the city general fund, it's about sixty percent.
Don't we own any property outside of the RDA?
That are subject to the LRPMP, they're all Victorville RDA properties.
That are subject?
The city owns property outside, but the.
Absolutely.
But the, the RDA itself, no.
I guess what I'm asking is, is there surplus property that should be sold, could be sold that is not part of that process?
City owns. Yeah, we have some properties that could be sold. I don't know that they necessarily should be sold. With respect to the golf course loan, we may have been able to pay some of it down a few years ago, but wanted to wait and see. There was some expectation when Billy Castor Golf was here that within five years, they would turn the operation around and the golf course would have the ability to fund repayment of that loan. I think it's been made pretty clear to us now that that's not going to happen. So, the only appropriate funder is the city's general fund. At some point, we'll need to work that into the budget, but it's not going to be this year.
Our paths as a bad debt.
Can we just write stuff off as bad? What's the difference?
Well, you, the general fund could. It's the same effect essentially, but it would be unwise to try to write off as a bad debt to the, one of the enterprise funds, which either the sewer or the solid waste under the B.
It's not, it's not general fund write-off. It's a.
Yeah, it's not a solid waste fund write-off that I propose at all. Because those are paid by ratepayers and the ratepayers need to get those funds back.
Yeah, right.
Questions? That's it for the inter-fund. And in proportion of debt service, I think we covered some of those. We have two debt service that will essentially pay off in two thousand and sixteen. The EFC ninety dash one is to pay off in September two thousand and sixteen. The balance is seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand. And the Baldi Mesa Water District, the certificate of participation, about eight hundred thousand dollars, that will be paid off in August.
What pension you want?
Forty-eight, forty-nine.
Okay, there you go.
Sorry, it's just dollar forty-seven.
Forty-seven, forty-eight, forty-nine.
Correct.
Okay.
So, total's about four hundred and twenty million.
Okay. Any questions, council, regarding those issues? Okay, go ahead. All finished, okay. Next.
That concludes the everybody workshop. As city manager have mentioned earlier, we're open to any questions or correction or input, but you did give the good news that we would be able to be balanced with them in this month when we schedule the final vote, final conclusion, all the changes that we have requested will be.
I'm looking for the Foxborough. Where is that in the?
The first one.
The very first one. Is that the balance on it after we applied what, thirty, thirty-five million, thirty million?
We applied about twenty million.
Yeah, it was at seventy-three.
Okay, and then.
Seventy-eight, some.
And then we set aside five for.
For that principal for the last five years.
For finance.
That is the balance, too.
Any other questions on that? Personnel, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, thank. I have one quick question or one comment request. And just that when we do get to a balanced budget, considering where we are today and how we're going to get there, if we could have an executive summary of changes to get us there, just, I mean, something brief, I'd really appreciate that and I appreciate SAV's work.
Okay. You bet. I have a question, I guess a comment and a question in regard to personnel updates, budgets, personnel changes. We went through a study, we went through a mass change of job descriptions, salary adjustments, recently went through all the management. We have more. We have new positions, we have changes, we have.
We do have a few more, but every single one of them went through that exact review, Jim, all the way to my level, asking those three questions. Why, why, why now considering we just went through all of that study work? But there, every budget has a few changes here and there. We do have, I think, a couple of new positions, none of them in the general fund.
Well, I'm looking at going from twenty-one to twenty-four, twenty-three to twenty-seven, fifty to sixty. I thought we went through this.
Those are not the class and comp, those are promotional opportunities or recruitments. Or, and or, depending on the department, yeah.
Yeah, there is at least one that I can recall, Jim, that somehow got left out of the mix the last, I don't know which council. It appears as a change now, but it really was.
Very last. Very last.
Very last.
Right, like we said, they eliminated everything in the general fund that scaled down anything after renewal of departments and the city manager that wasn't absolutely necessary for next year. Some of this is a spinoff, you could say, from some of the changes we've made over the last year where we were able to either condense positions or restructuring in any department with the changes and including it up to the latest, which is changes in oversight over those departments between Keith and myself. So, it's more of some type of restructuring, some promotional opportunities, but it's not, I understand what you're saying. You're asking, is it the same thing as class and comp, but we actually changed people's ranges in the same title position? That's not it. These are all titles and ranges that were adopted through class and comp.
All of them?
All of them except one, which is a correction that I know of, which was a tech that is a lower level of one department than another department that's been combined. Yes, to the bottom part that you're seeing, the from range to range?
Uh huh.
You are, you are correct. Those are changes in title and position and responsibilities.
Yeah, the very first one listed there, animal control dispatcher, we found a need for more field operations. So, rather than adding a physician, we're converting a current dispatcher position into a field position.
Well, I don't want to get into all those now, but I did have some questions. Also, I have one comment. Jim, just went through health changes so that, and I don't, I don't know that I fully understand it. I don't know that I'm supposed to. I now have. I now have co-pay where in the past I didn't, I talked to other employees who are concerned. Conversely, the employees that I've talked to said, well, I've got to pay more apparently for the same thing. Out of, just absolute curiosity, I asked a member in the office, back in our office, what are other agencies aligned for employees each month for their benefit package? Not for holiday, but just for their health and dental and so on. And we are the lowest, 20% et cetera. And so I hope the city council will recognize that since employees are not going to be paying co-pay and paying more for prescriptions that we should be raising that, especially since we're lowest anyway. All the other agencies in the valley are one to two of them are much higher than we are, so we need to look at that.
On the fringe? Yeah, I know we are the lowest.
And the actual cost of the plan, Jim? Josie, do you know the number or the percentage of employees who at least have a plan available through the first that would save them money?
In comparison to the renewal rates that we would have received, it's approximately 80% of employees that are going to be saving a little bit in comparison to what we would have received with that now. Now, compared to last year, the ERP is more out of pocket, but not as much as if we would have stayed with that now in the old plans.
If there was an opportunity, if we hear you about it, Sarah, and we heard about the furlough, et cetera, I mean, we wished six months ago we were coming forward with the funds to return to a 40-hour work week and to give you a survey of what's out there. It doesn't mean much to do a survey and bring it forward to you, but we're trying to make up a deficit at this point. So I guarantee you, the minute that we get to the point where we feel like we're going to be ahead, there will be more options and costs. What we hope to bring in was a menu of items that you've asked for in the past, direction that we've had, with costs and surveys, kind of like a Chinese menu where you can pick, and that's what this was intended to be a year ago. But here we are, still trying to make up the rest of the shortfall. And we're going to do that. So at this point, we're settling for that, and we're happy with that, and hope to bring that to you, or plan to bring that to you in a month. But we absolutely agree with you, that's what we've seen also with the neighboring cities and organizations.
Bernie will take care of it, it'll be all free. Kill them. We need to treat the employees.
After Kentucky, I don't think there's going to be any more Bernie.
Any other questions? Council, any questions? At all?
Do you have public comment?
Oh, we do, I'm sorry. My apologies. We have a...
I'm trying to call it.
We have public comment at this time, this is the time and place, if anyone wants to, I don't have any cards, so that's not really... Okay, since we have none, this portion is adjourned.